You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
Good evening, everyone. It's 8:00 PM. The January 8th, 2025 meeting of the Branford RTM is called to order. The first thing we will do is recite the pledge. Who would like to lead?
I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God and to his the his liberty and justice for all. Well, three-part masquerade. Thank you. Okay, so now we will move to item three on the agenda. Pardon me. For the clerk to call the roll.
Easy now.
Representative Adams.
Was it?
Representative Adams. Absent?
No.
Here.
He's okay, present, okay. Thank you, Representative Adams. Representative Edelman. Representative Edelman.
Not here, Frank. Yeah.
Thank you, Maria. Representative Alphon.
Here.
Representative Amore.
Here.
Representative Anderson.
Here.
Representative Black.
Representative Black, here.
Representative Bonnenberger.
Present.
Repre- Representative Brooks.
Representative Brooks, here.
Representative Dayhill.
Here.
Representative Everson.
Representative Everson is present.
Representative Greenberg.
Representative Greenberg, here.
Representative Hartwell. Absent. Representative Henshaw.
Representative Henshaw, here.
Representative Hines. Absent. Representative Ingraham.
Representative Ingraham is here.
Representative Keith.
Representative Keith is here.
Repre- Leach.
Representative Leach is here.
Representative Larson.
Representative Larson is present.
Representative Lefredo. Absent. Representative Mareska.
Here.
Representative McCall.
Here.
Representative McCormick.
Representative McCormick is here.
Representative Nupani.
Representative Nupani is here.
Representative Papalizio.
Representative Papalizio is here.
Representative Sharkey.
Here.
Representative Schresta.
Representative Schresta is here.
Representative Sumro. Absent. Representative Toohill. Present. Representative Verderam.
Representative Verderam is here. And through you, Representative Amore, I believe Representative Hines is on the call. He's just on mute.
Yeah, I was gonna tell Frank, I saw the same thing. Frank, Representative Hines is here.
Okay. Can you hear me?
We got you now.
Okay, thank you, Representative Hines. And also Representative Waterman.
Representative Waterman is here.
Okay, so just to make sure. So the absent members as of now are Representative Edelman, Representative Hartwell, Representative Lefredo, Representative Okay, now for the ex officios, I saw, I believe, First Selectman Jamie Cosgrove is with us, as well as Town Clerk Lisa Harpen. Is there anyone else, ex officio, please?
Angie's there.
Yeah.
Who's there?
Angie.
Oh, she's there too? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you, Madam Moderator, we have a quorum.
To Representative Toohill.
You're welcome.
Okay. There are, I am not in receipt of any correspondence, communications, or petitions. Representative Toohill, have you received anything?
Uh, I have not.
Okay, so then we will move on to item four. I'm sorry, I switched that. Approval of the minutes of December 11th, 2024 meeting of the RTM. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved, Representative.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Representative McCormick seconds, Frank.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. We have a brief agenda tonight, so let's move on to the heart of the matter. Agenda.
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
We need to vote on that.
On the minutes.
On the minutes, of course, I'm sorry. Okay, can we have a vote on the approval of the minutes?
Aye.
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 Any not, any disapprovals? Any voting no? Let's do it that way. A hearing nun. The minutes are approved as submitted. Thank you very much. Okay, item six. To consider and if appropriate approve a tentative agreement between the town of Branford and the dispatchers UPS EU slash COPS, the Connecticut Organization for Public Safety, Local 014, for the period July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2027. I believe this was heard by Public Services. So Representative Bonnenberger, will you take the floor?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Everyone got me? Can you hear me? I'm off mute? Great. Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is Representative Bonnenberger. The Public Services Committee met yesterday, Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, to hear Branford's Director of Human Resources, Margaret Liberta, and Branford's Chief of Police, Chief Mulhern, describe the tentative agreement mentioned. Highlights include extending the length of the probationary period for dispatchers from six months to a year, adjustments to the way part-time dispatchers can be employed, raises the salaries to remain competitive with neighboring towns, and a small reduction in the amount of workers' compensation a dispatcher can claim over a 24-month period. In short, the agreement was good with everybody. They went through mediation and everybody gave it a thumbs up and a clean bill of health. Following an informative presentation and useful questions from the committee and the public, the committee voted unanimously seven, nothing, to endorse the agreement, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you very much. We'll first hear comments or questions from members of the RTM. Please raise your hands. I see Representative Brooks. Let me, as a matter of procedure, if you would please use your, the hand emoji to raise your hands, that will bump you up to the top of the Zoom screen so I can see you. Okay? Thank you. Representative Brooks.
Through you, Madam Moderator. Do we know what percentage? Part A is the question. Do we know what percentage the increase is to pay?
This is Representative Bonnenberger. The first, so from July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022. Or do you want me to run through this year by year or just give you guys kind of a broad overview?
I'm trying with an average.
Average, so 2.5% for most years with one bump, 2024 last year being 5.25%, which is a 7 point, a 2.75% retention adjustment, and then the normal 2.5%. So a little bit over 2.5%, which is, again, competitive with neighboring towns. That's the answer for part A. What's part B?
Part B is the commentary, if I might, Madam Moderator.
You might.
I just go back to some of my previous positions. You know, the cost of living has risen by more than 3% over the year. As we all know, from the revale, values in homes in this area have, I would say, skyrocketed in the past five years. More than a 2.5% increase would cover. And I just think we have a responsibility to pay our people better. I think we have a responsibility as a society to pay people better. But, you know, and it's irresponsible. That's, if the argument is that they're not performing, well, then you would find somebody that would perform. But I don't agree with it. But, you know, I understand it's negotiated. And if I stand in the way, I vote no, they get nothing. And I obviously can't do that. But again, I say, we're spending $20 million on police station, we spent $7.5 million on a field, but we can't pay our people. It's wrong. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Representative Everson.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Last evening at the Public Services, our Human Resources Director, Margaret Liberta, explained that the 2024 bump is a salary adjustment and is a result of the town reviewing salaries in comparison to other towns. And the dispatchers were quite behind, as I understood it. So there is some, a jump in the salary, albeit a small one, but still an increase that is part of this contract. And these dispatchers have been without a contract for many years and, you know, do excellent work for our town and are a key part of public safety. I don't disagree with Representative Brooks, but I think this contract brings our dispatchers closer to where they should be, and I will be voting in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Everson. Representative Keith, you're up next.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I was wondering if Representative Bonnenberger or anybody else could describe that this contract in comparison to the education contracts. I know we've been voting on a lot of education contracts last year, teachers this year, principals. We have the municipal contracts. And I was wondering if somebody could help me to understand how these contracts all fit together in a wider system.
This is Representative Bonnenberger punting to anybody who can make that a comparison. I could compare probably certain contracts in the fire department to the police department, but I haven't been paying too much attention to the details of the education contracts, frankly.
Representative Josh, do you, Brooks, do you have a response?
I would say the one thing I noticed is the 5.5% jump, which is similar, well, it's 5.2% jump, is similar to the police contract, which is 5.5% jump. The teachers' contract, which was somewhat in line with the administration contract, was across, kind of across the board. And don't, nobody shoot me because my information is 100% right because that's usually the case. So I haven't been shot yet, I guess I'm okay. But the teachers' contract was about 2.5% across the board. The difference with the teachers' contract is they have what's called a step program. And that was, for a while, their steps were frozen, but that's been reinstated. So their increases are different from the aspect of years of service. But from, you know, once you're done with the step program process, their increases is also a 2.5% because I believe I said the same thing for their contract as well. So that's why I'm going out of memory there. That's, I can tell you.
Madam Moderator, through you to Representative Brooks.
Who is speaking?
Representative Keith.
Oh, hi, Representative Keith. Yes, go ahead.
Through you to Representative Brooks. So to what you just said, if I understand correctly, the teachers and the administrators are getting roughly two-plus, less than 3% raise. But the hard-working public safety officials in the fire department and the police department are getting a five-ish percent raise. Representative Brooks, is that what I understand?
I have Representative Black's hand up. And Representative Brooks, would you clarify? And then we'll go to Representative Black.
Yes, this is Representative Brooks. The 5.5% for police and dispatch is only for one year. And then it's 2.5 every other years. With the teachers, I believe, which is not, it's a little bit apples to oranges, but the teachers, it's 2.5 on average for their step, gets raised each time for that step. But as you may recall, if you work five years, you get paid one rate. And then when you work six years, and I'm simplifying it, I'm sure it's more complicated. When you work six years, you get a jump that may not equivalent to 2.5%. It's that step, the six-year step raises by 2.5%. But the actual jump from five years to six years may not be the same. I don't have those exact numbers in front of me.
Thank you very much. Well, once you've finished speaking, would you kindly lower your hand emojis? Thank you. Representative Black.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Moderator. I think first it's important to remember that the Board of Ed negotiates its contracts with the teachers' unions and the administrators without any or much influence from the town, and the town negotiates with its employees. But the 5% raises are really market salary adjustments that are one year only. They certainly aren't year after year. That most of these raises are 2.5%, which is roughly what all our contracts have been for the last few years. Thank you.
Are there other? Are there other comments or questions regarding?
Madam Moderator, this is Representative Keith. May I ask a question through you to Representative Black?
Um, yes.
Representative Black, you've been on this RTM a lot longer than I have, and I'd like to lean on your experience. The comment that you just made about one year versus multi-year and Board of Education versus town negotiations, you said that this contract or that we're talking about right now is on par. But I guess my question is, aren't we hovering around, and again, like you know more about this than I do, aren't we hovering basically around the cost of living adjustment? Really, like, none of these actually are real dollar increases? Aren't they basically just inflation increases? Is that fair, Representative Black?
Um, well, through Madam Moderator, if I may. Oops. Madam Moderator?
Yes, go ahead, Representative Black.
Thank you, Representative Black. Yeah, I mean, inflation's been running hotter. You know, supposedly it's coming back down. But, you know, are there real increases versus nominal? You know, no, I think, you know, my wife's gotten less than inflationary pulse from healthcare, working in healthcare. It's, I mean, that's one reason we, you know, had the results of the last election is that people are losing ground in real salaries. But, you know, you can spin it any way you want. But, thank you.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, one moment, please. Who's speaking? Representative Toohill. And also, before you speak, I see that First Selectman Cosgrove is on the call. If, after Representative Toohill speaks, if you could speak to any of this, perhaps Representative Toohill, go ahead. And then Jamie, if you have anything to add to this, it would be appreciated.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I don't have all the information in front of me. I haven't done any studying on this. But, you know, I believe that there's steps now. Steps are in almost all the contracts. The police have steps. Dispatch has steps. Fire has steps. So I think that's when they get the real raise, you know? When they go from step three, you know, up to step two, or, you know. So, you know, so you're right, it's true. I mean, these are mostly cost of living raises, but they do get raises when they, you know, when they climb to the next step. And of course, they also have steps in the teachers' contract, you know. You know, so, I mean, they do get raises. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Representative Toohill. First Selectman Cosgrove, can you add anything to clarify any of this?
Thanks, Representative Amore. I guess the only thing I would add, just, you know, what is before you tonight is, again, this is the dispatcher's contract. And just kind of hearing all the comments and questions that the representatives had this last few minutes regarding this topic and really contracts in general across the board, whether it's on the town side or the Board of Ed side. It's important, you know, for us all to remember, these are negotiations, right? There's negotiations on both sides. And at the end of the day, we're able to come to an agreement with the bargaining unit. You know, to Representative Brooks's concerns about, you know, what we're paying our employees, certainly the town of Branford, and this is something, you know, the administration is committed to, is being sure that we're competitive. Right? We want to make sure that we're competitive and we're meeting not only, you know, where we are in the market, but we want to be, have a competitive edge. And that's really what we're negotiating and working with our employees to sure, not only to recruit, but retain our employees. Whether it's, we're certainly all aware, particularly on the public safety side of it, in retaining and recruiting police officers and dispatchers even to some degree. It's a very stressful, difficult job. But it's really across the board. And it's not just unique to Branford. It's really across the board. I've talked to a number of my counterparts throughout the state, and they're all facing the same challenges in terms of what we're trying to find, whether it's, you know, town planner, rec department, you know, all the departments, assessors. It's getting more and more difficult to find people. So as far as, you know, it is a goal of the administration to ensure that we're, our salaries and our benefits are competitive so we can retain and recruit talent to Branford. And I think that's the result of this negotiation, you know, through mediation resulted in. That's all I really have to add at this point.
Thank you very much. Jamie, thank you. Representative Keith, your hand is still up. Do you have another question or is it just still there?
No, Madam Moderator. I do want to thank the First Selectmen and others for their comments. We do live in the best community on the South Shore, and I'm voting in favor of this contract. I just wanted to use my time to raise an equivalency that it seems that sometimes, and again, no esperriments on our great community, but I wish that more was connected between education and public safety. And I just wanted to highlight the fact that the public safety contracts had a higher rate than the teachers' contracts. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Representative Keith. Okay, are there members of the public who would wish to ask any questions or raise any other issues? Again, please raise your emoji hand so I can see you.
Point of clarification, Madam Moderator. This is about six that we're talking about. It's not on any matter, right? We're just specifically talking about?
Yeah, on point six, on this matter.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Okay, seeing no hands raised, I think it's time we put this to a vote. We have a committee report, so we don't need a second. So, and this will be a roll call vote. We will vote on the committee's recommendation to approve. Mr. Toohill, are you ready?
All set, Madam Moderator.
Okay, go.
Representative Adams.
Approve.
Representative Alf- Alfon.
Yes.
Representative.
Representative Toohill, let me stop you. I think procedure says that you should, each voter should say their name before casting their vote. Okay? For the Zoom.
All right. Thank you.
Representative Alfon votes yes.
Thank you.
Representative Adams votes yes.
Thank you. Representative Anderson.
Representative Anderson votes yes.
Representative Black.
Representative Black votes yes.
Representative Bonnenberger.
Representative Bonnenberger votes yes.
Representative Brooks.
Representative Brooks begrudgingly votes yes.
Representative Dayhill.
Representative Dayhill votes yes.
Representative Everson.
Representative Everson votes yes.
Representative Greenberg.
Representative Greenberg, yes.
Representative Henshaw.
Representative Henshaw, yes.
Representative Hines.
Line votes yes.
Representative Ingraham.
Representative Ingraham votes yes.
Representative Keith.
Representative Keith votes yes.
Representative Leach.
Representative Leach votes yes.
Representative Larson.
Representative Larson votes yes.
Representative Mareska.
Representative Mareska votes yes.
Representative McCall.
Representative McCall votes yes.
Representative McCormick.
Representative McCormick votes yes.
Representative Nupan.
Representative Nupan votes yes.
Representative Papalizio.
Representative Papalizio overwhelmingly votes yes for this.
Representative Sharkey.
Representative Sharkey votes yes.
Representative Schresta.
Representative Schresta votes yes.
Representative Toohill votes yes. Representative Verderam.
Representative Verderam votes yes.
Representative Waterman.
Representative Waterman votes yes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much. We have approval. Okay, moving on, we will move to item seven. To consider and if appropriate create an ordinance to establish a harbor management commission pursuant to Connecticut General Statute's Section 22A-113K. Mr. Henshaw, this is your purview. Would you like to report?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Yes, this is Representative Henshaw. The rules and ordinance
Uh, the Rules and Ordinances Committee did not meet in the month of December. Uh, however, the working groups who have been working, our working group who has been working on this particular item has made progress, and so I would ask that we re-refer, um, the item. I will need a second on that. Before we, we get the second and vote on it, I would mention that just for the public edification, that the, um, in the January 21st meeting of Rules and Ordinances, we will be actually reviewing a, a pretty, uh, detailed outline of the actual ordinance. And that will, that detailed outline will be published prior to the meeting as an attachment to the agenda. It has not been put on the, um, the website yet, but prior to the, the meeting, there will be a draft, uh, so the public can review it and the committee can review it. Um, so I would ask for a second on that.
Representative Ingraham, a second.
All right, we have a second on, uh, re-referring the matter to the, um, uh, next Rules and Ordinances Committee, uh, meeting. So I'm going to ask for, uh, a voice vote, and then we'll ask for any, um, any who, uh, are voting no, just to save us a, another roll call. All in favor? Oh, sorry. Representative, uh, Brooks.
Uh, i- i- my rec- rec- recollection stands just for, to make this more efficient. I believe the next two item agendas are also RNO. They also didn't meet. Can we lump all three together if they're all going to be re-referred?
Well, there's only, there's only one more, um. Okay, so let, let's get this, let's get this one over with now, and then we'll vote on the last. Uh, Representative Keefe?
Um, Madam Moderator, I'm not sure if this is a, an appropriate time to make a comment. May I?
On, what is it in reference to?
The Harbor Commission.
Um, yes, this is an appropriate time.
Um, I just wanted to state for the record, I, I had a great conversation with the First Selectmen as well as Representative Henshaw, as well as, uh, Representative Bonnenberger, although that conversation was, was maybe last year. Um, uh, I just want to say that it's important to me, when we vote on the Harbor Commission, that the town maintains, uh, first salvage rights. That, uh, my understanding is, part of the funding of the proposal, uh, includes, um, dredging rights. And I just wanted to note for the record, uh, if there were things that were dredged, that were historical items, the, the town should have first salvage rights.
Thank you, Representative Keefe. I'll encourage you to go to the meeting and make sure that that point is made officially in response.
Madam Moderator, could I respond to that? I can't find my hand emoji, but, um,
Oh.
I would like to respond.
Sure.
Just, just, just for clarification purposes, uh, not only to the, um, RTM members, but also to the general public. This, this ordinance is going to create the commission, a harbor management commission. It will not be, um, creating any details of either a harbor management plan or harbor management regulations. So I think that, um, the, the comment that, that Representative Keefe made really would come into play during the process of creating the harbor management plan, which happens, you know, after we actually establish this commission. It will not be part of the ordinance itself.
Thank you, that's a, a very, an excellent clarification. Okay, any other comments around re-referring this matter to the next meeting of the R, of RNO? Okay, we'll have a vo- voice vote?
Do we have a second on this?
Yeah, yes, yes. Uh, I think it was Rep- Representative Ingraham. Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any opposed to re-referral, please raise your hand. Hearing and seeing none, the matter is re-referred. Okay, let us move on very quickly to item eight, to consider and, if appropriate, create an ordinance which will encode reasonable restrictions on short-term rentals in Branford. Representative Henshaw, please take the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, again, RNO did not meet in December. Um, the working group has been making progress on this. I would ask that the, um, the RTM re-refer the item. We will need a second on it, and again, for public, um, edification, I would note that the January 21st meeting will also have a more detailed, um, outline of the, of the ordinance, which is, so that, that meeting is, is a key meeting for people who not only want to understand where the ordinance is heading, but also would like to make comments about it. So I would ask for a second.
Representative Ingraham out, second.
Representative Ingraham, thank you. Sounds like it's going to be quite a meeting. Bring your lunch. Um, okay, uh, the, um, the question on, on the floor is to re-refer this to the next, to the January 21st meeting of RNO. Um, we'll have a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Please raise your hand or state no. Hearing and seeing none, the, uh, matter is re-referred. Thank you very much. Um, item nine, any other business? Representative Ingraham.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Representative Ingraham. I'd like to ask the RTM to take a moment of silence for, uh, one of the greatest human beings that this country's ever produced, President James Earl Carter. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. We will take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Um, in line with that, just a reminder that tomorrow is a national day of mourning, and, um, many federal, all federal facilities and, and the stock exchange are closed tomorrow. So, well, there will be, um, uh, some kind of celebration. Thank you for, um, uh, announcing that, Representative Ingraham. Other business, Representative Adams.
I know it's gone out, but the, um, MLK Junior breakfast is coming up January 20th, promises to be delightful, and this year promises to have enough seating for everyone who bought the ticket. It'll be at the high-
It was tight last year.
Yeah, boy, was it tight.
It was very packed, it was a very cold day, of course, it was a warm gathering inside. But I'm assuming it'll be warm ins- inside the high school as well.
Yeah. Let's hope. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, it's always a, a great, uh, morning. Okay, looking around, any other hands up for comments or, uh, questions of interest for the RTM? Okay, very good, everybody. Um, I think we're done with our business, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll be motion to adjourn.
Uh, who, who, who got, who won? Okay, we have a lot of firsts.
District wants to get out of here.
Yes, okay, all right. We will have a vo- voice vote, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, we'll see you next time.
Thanks, I'm good night.
Good night.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.